Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order for the Charter Review Committee. And this is the September 13th meeting of the Charter Review. And I appreciate everybody being here and I appreciate your time and your continued engagement in a very important process.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody's talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking as loud as the microphone will allow me. And I think there's other people that are talking over me, so. But some of them just happen to be council colleagues, so. But no, I appreciate everybody being here. I appreciate the continued engagement. And hopefully tonight we'll hear some more great comments. So far, the comments have been great and lively and very engaging. And I really appreciated everyone's ability to respond to questions at the last meeting. I know that there are some people who may not feel comfortable answering questions from the committee. And I appreciate that. And if you don't want any questions, just tell us. You don't want any questions. But it's valuable for us to be able to ask questions so that we can probe some of these things because these are important questions and these are important concepts. And there's nuances to the concepts and we're really, we're not looking to challenge anyone. We're looking to explore where everyone is, why they are where they are, and to figure out the best ideas and best solutions so that we can be sure that we present a fair and complete report that explores all the nuances to the rest of the council. So that's really kind of the hopes, I think, and the objectives of each of the questions that you're getting. It's not to challenge or embarrass anyone. But if you don't want questions, please, just simply tell us you don't want questions. So I think with that, we will proceed with the citizens' comments. Anybody from the committee have anything that they want to share?
I think we can have a discussion about whether we hold additional meetings maybe after the comments, and we can discuss that then.
Okay. It's kind of an unusual circumstance for us in terms of having to move the mic and all that. And these chairs seem...
It's wire. You can pull it away.
Pass it down.
Look at that.
They packed everything.
All right. Now, all I need is a karaoke machine and we could be here all night. Okay. So what we will do is we are going to introduce ourselves once again for folks that don't know us. And we will start down with Mr. Ward.
Hi, my name's Bron Ward. I live at 430 Running Brook Lane. Been in the city for 17 years. And this was my first hometown after getting out of the military. And I have left, so I like it here.
Thank you for serving.
My pleasure.
My name is Pastor Ricky McGee. I live at 1014 Majors. Been here since '01. Love Mesquite. And we're looking forward to this meeting on tonight here at McDonald's.
Thank you. Jeff Casper, I serve on the City Council and looking forward to hearing your views tonight.
Hi, I'm Greg Nethery. I serve on the City Council. And I'm honored to do that and appreciate everyone's attendance here tonight and look forward to hearing the comments.
Hi, I'm Yolanda Shepherd. I live at 1420 Heritage. I've been in Mesquite for 23 years.
I'm Janice Bell, and I live on Jessica Lane in Mesquite. And I've been living here for approximately 20 years.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wally. I live on Seabold Court in Mesquite. It's really not far from here. We've been there about 40 years, and I'm very happy to be in Mesquite.
My name's David Burris. I live at 4229 Cory O.A. I moved here when I was four and some days in the city collection is very, very long time ago.
Okay, so we have five cards. If you want to speak tonight, we ask that you fill out a registration card. Those registration cards are available over here at the table as you came in. And what we're gonna do tonight, we're gonna limit everyone to five minutes inclusive of We'll play with that time to the extent that the committee may have questions for you or you may be in the middle of something. We'll let you finish, but we gotta... Do we have our Amazon timer? Yeah? All right. So we've got a timer that has all kinds of bells and whistles on it that'll let us know when the time is up. So when you hear that, you should begin to wrap it up. When you come to the podium, it helps us, this is being filmed, and we're also taking notes from the film. It'll help us if you give us your name, your address. That helps us for record-keeping purposes, so we appreciate that. All right, so we will go ahead and get started. Julie Shelton. Yeah, the podium is over here, has the cute little Mesquite, Texas symbol on it. Hello, Bill.
Hello, everybody. I am Julie Shelton. I'm from the Edgemont Park neighborhood. And I have been born, I was born in Dallas, raised in Mesquite, been here for a long time and back in the city now. I am here to, again, state my support for term limits for the City Council. There were a lot of good comments at another meeting I attended, and so I did a little more research trying to find more relevance. And the most interesting thing I found, which I didn't find much on city, it's mostly related to Congress and upper offices, but the most interesting statistic I found showed that when Congress had a 9% approval rating, three-fourths of the incumbents were voted back in. That tells you about the power of incumbency. That tells you about the power of back-room deals and good old boy networks and you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. And the only way to solve that is term limits. Dallas County Commissioners do not have term limits. We have a very ineffective, in my opinion, Dallas County Commissioner who's not only had ethical investigations, but other things that you would think would get him voted out, and he is still here. He has done nothing for Mesquite as far as I know. I haven't heard anything in the last five, 10 years. Granted, I don't keep up with everything. But term limits, if you can't get somebody voted out because they either have a powerful base or a base that's motivated in one way or another, then the only way to do that and make sure that you will get rid of somebody who's ineffective or not representing your area is term limits. And so that was the best evidence. There's all kinds of pros and cons. People talk experience versus, oh, what if the new guy will have to catch up, learning curve. But I really, that was the most powerful thing to me, that statistic, 9% approval rating, three-fourths of those guys voted back in. I don't want to see that happen with our city. I've seen it happen too much with complacency and apathy and using the City Council to boost your business or your contacts or your prestige or your whatever. And when that happens, in the past, it has hurt the city at times, I believe. And I'm grateful that we don't seem to have that going on with our current council, but we also need to think about the future and protect ourselves for the future. Thank you.
How are you for having people ask questions?
Sure.
What are you looking at as far as the term?
The term limits that I looked at, a lot of the people out there were talking about four-year terms and two terms maximum. There were arguments for less, but, you know, considering some of the projects we have going on in the city, I, to me, two terms would be reasonable.
I've got a question. Thanks for coming, Julie. There's 10 articles in the Charter. Have you looked at anything else? Because this is open for everything.
Honestly, today was the first day that I had a chance to even print anything out because I hate reading things online. So that was the only area I had looked at before, and I haven't looked at anything else yet.
Okay. Please feel free to look at that because we're open not just for the elections, that's what started the conversation.
Oh, definitely.
But there's a few other things that you might consider looking at.
I'm sure there probably is.
Look at the police citizen ratio. Let me know, just know what you think about that.
I will definitely do that.
Angela, I have a quick question. So I think you're referring to John Wiley Price, right? And regardless of who the name is or who the person is, to me, even if John Wiley Price were to resign, retire, step down, whatever, you still have the same electorate who would replace him with the next John Wiley Price. And we were kind of talking a little bit earlier about congressional candidates and how they can serve, some of them 30 years. And, you know, when Eddie Bernice Johnson retires, her district is going to very likely put someone into office who shares her values, who maybe even matches her demographics. And to me, term limits are kind of a superficial way to confront voter engagement and having a vigorous debate. And so what would be your response to that? That even if you get rid of the person, the candidate's gonna be the same iteration, just a new face, new name?
I totally see your point. And obviously voter apathy and voter engagement is a big problem that we have in Mesquite and Dallas and Texas. I would say to that, that without term limits, we're stuck with term limits, at least we have a snowball's chance.
I think that's fair. And I would just add, as someone who would brag about being a community organizer, I don't think you're stuck ever. You just, you get out there, you find friends, you knock enough doors, you make a difference. I think that's always an avenue to explore.
I've got a quick question. You know, the City of Dallas, City Council has term limits. And there were three popular council members who turned out recently, and they were considered effective in their districts, but they turned out. And then this last election, you know, they sat out a term because those were the rules, and then they were eligible to run again. All three were swept back in overwhelmingly. What do you think about that? I mean, what does that tell you?
I think that, I think there's still a big incumbency factor. Like Jeff said, if you have people who have shown an allegiance and you don't get out there and engage them enough to show them a different way or somebody who might be more effective, you probably will have some of that. But at the, I found it very interesting at the meet-the-council meeting that we had at Tom Thumb last Saturday, the mayor of Bog Springs said that when they went to term limits, they were afraid that they would have people not running. And it was the opposite. They actually had more people run. They were afraid people wouldn't have the experience or whatever to fill the spots. And then they actually had people running for things that, more than they expected. So it's a battle, engaging, engaging the citizenry and showing them the options and getting them out of the apathetic rut that a lot of them are in, if they even know that somebody's running. That's a battle.
I have a question. What is your idea, think someone can stay off?
David, can you repeat it once the microphone, once the phone, we have the microphone.
Is it, should they stay off for two years, four years? What's your idea on how long they should stay off so they can run again?
I think one term. So if the term is two years, then you stay off two years. If the term is four years, then you stay off. And that may be a little, the four years kind of seems extreme to me. So maybe there's a balance for that. But I think, I think at least a year minimum would be my personal opinion.
This is a question when I've talked to people this last week, they've asked me, let's say Mr. Casper from Jeff runs his term out, but he makes it well-known at the end that he is gonna come back. What's gonna motivate somebody to run to his place knowing that he is coming back, he was well-liked, he did a great job? What is, what is the motivation for somebody to run again to his place knowing in two years he may be stuck?
Well, if you're not sure about it and you want to kind of sample it, that would be the perfect time because then you could lose gracefully and step back out. I think if you're motivated, I think if you're motivated by public service, as I feel like a lot of people are, I think that even the chance to do something for a limited amount of time, to maybe have a voice where you didn't have a voice before, if you really feel that way, then I feel like you're gonna run regardless and you're just gonna let the future sort itself out.
Do you have any fear that you're actually, could be creating a system with this timeout where you have a term off and then you can run again instead of having a hard stop? Do you have any fear that you'd be creating a system that would actually encourage a political machine so that a person who's about to term out could actually pick a surrogate to serve for two years and then step off and allow that person to run again? Do you see what I'm saying?
Apparently Missouri had a big problem with that. They had a lot of people push for term limits because they thought that that would fix their state legislature, and that's exactly what happened. It led to some of the opposite. And I do have some fears about that, but I would have more fears if we were talking about the Texas State Legislature, but we're talking about the Mesquite City Council. And yes, we do have some more powerful people in this town, but I don't think we have enough to outgun the hard-working people who would stand up for that. It is a fear. It's also have the fear that there may be spots where nobody runs. But you never know until you try it. There's always, you can always review it in the future and say, well, this just didn't work out like we thought. Maybe we need to review it again. But we've had such a same system in place, and it has led to some complacency and some things like that. And so I just like the idea of continuing to move forward and seeing what happens.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And Mr. Gary Ward has joined us for tonight's meeting, so I appreciate you.
We didn't have him at Kimbrough, did we?
Not this week, no. Was there anybody ready to speak at Kimbrough?
No, there was nobody there to speak. I wondered where y'all were.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shelton. We'll now hear from Darlene McCurry. And for the committee members, it will help if you, if you just let us know you have a question, let us get the microphone to you so that we can make sure everybody hears the question and we get it on the video as well.
Wow, that's a hard one to follow. Let me tell you, Ms. Shelton, you did a great job. I'm not that good. My name's Darlene McCurry, 2212 Boeman Avenue, 75150. And my only thought is that I feel like we've had the, have not had term limits for so many years, and I prefer having the term limits. See how that works out. Say three, two terms, two-year terms, or maybe four. And that's my only thought. No questions, please. I don't know the answer.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Well, next here for Mr. Brian Odom.
Brian, are you following up?
No. Brian Odom, 1330 Buena Vista. Just want to let the committee know that after I spoke at the last meeting, went back, watched the tape, and listened to my answers, listened to everybody else's answers, debated with myself over a few things. And I still believe that term limits would be a good thing for the city. I believe four-two-year terms with at least two years off would be great. I am against single-member districts. I think the whole city at large should vote for the council. Because I think every council member should be pretty much an at-large council member anyway. Something new that hasn't been brought up, I don't think, is I would like to see, and by the way, I did read the Charter. Whoa. I didn't read the first part where it defines the boundaries of the city. I didn't read that. But I do, I would like to see, or at least have a discussion about, maybe the council appointing the fire chief and police chief. I think that would be beneficial and would also hold the council more accountable to public safety. May free up the actual government to do more governmenting things, you know, streets and dogs and so forth. So, just my thought.
Any questions for Mr. Odom? All right. Oh, you did?
Brian, what do you think the benefits of council-electing police chief and fire chief? What are those benefits?
The benefit now, I think if they appoint them, then of course they're gonna be reporting to the council. The council will be more directly responsible for the public safety. You know, any citizen can call, you know, Greg and go, hey, Greg, I'm people shooting off guns. And other than just calling the police chief up, there's really no accountability, you know, for that. This way it'd be more of a direct reporting to the council. I have a lot longer list of people who would be appointed by the council, but I got talked down at that. So I just think it'd be more accountable.
Greater accountability?
Yes.
Can we have a question? A quick question. How does your decision to confirm that?
Yeah, you can come speak and share your opinions, and we'll interact that way. And obviously, you know, if you want to talk to Mr. Odom, then otherwise, we're gonna have a hard time kind of getting through everybody and question upon question and then engaging you, and it'll just be mayhem. It'd be like Jeff Casper's classroom.
That's right. Actually, I have a student in the back.
Oh, do you? Awesome. Very good. Glad you're here.
I'd be more than happy to speak.
All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. So next, we'll hear from Mr. Sergio Garcia.
Hello, committee members. My name is Sergio Garcia, 1724 Longview, here in Mesquite. All right, the last time, last meeting I spoke, and I would like to say that from what I remember, I am glad to, that I heard that most of the speakers were in favor of a three-two-year term plan, which would be three two-year terms and then two years off before they could run again. This would be for council and mayor. I think that this, the work of this committee is going to lead to a more diversity on our city council. This is, this is my belief, that it will eventually lead to that, not knowing how long it'll take, but that's what I think it'll end up. Now, as the council, as you take this feedback to the council and about what was, what was said and what you've thought and your opinions, and the process of crafting the language that will appear on the ballot next May, that the people will vote on, I think that it should not end up coming out confusing to the voter. You know, I really don't want to see what comes out, yes means no, no means yes, only applicable with weekdays that end with the letter Y, you know, stuff like that. And other items that, to expand this conversation, not any in particular order. Okay. I'm not opposed to the council and the mayor getting an increase in their compensation for their service on the council, nor am I opposed to increasing the size of the council to better reflect the size of Mesquite and its population. And finally, I think that, an idea that I have, I've heard and read a little bit about is that the, like the seniors, the higher city staff should be required to reside in the city of Mesquite while they're employed here. A great example is when we hired Chief Cato, he had to move here before he took the job. Our city manager currently lives here in the city of Mesquite. Now, I don't know which positions, but I'm not talking all, all positions, you know, there's, there's some that I think that should be, you know, a real stakeholder, stakeholder in this community, and so they should be employed, live in Mesquite while they are employed here. All right. And I'm not afraid of questions.
We have... Okay. We'll start with Ms. Wally and then work our way to my right.
Sergio, you said that you thought the deliberations and the process we're going through would lead to greater diversity on the council.
Yes.
If the same, if the same voters are elected, all the members of the council in every election, how is that going to happen? If you have one set of voters, because we're all...
I believe that if you have, you have to term out, even if the same person would have to come, would want to come back later, you're gonna have that break. You're gonna have that opportunity to have a diversified council. You have more women, more African-American, well, and African-American or more African-Americans on the, on the council. I think that eventually it will lead to it. I just don't know myself how long that would take.
Okay. I'm just not clear on the mechanism, you know, what is going to make that happen? Why would, why would having term limits result in...
Well, you wouldn't have people with the ability to stay in the same seat for 14, 16 years. You will have a break. You will have a chance. The voter will have a chance to, and new candidates will have a chance to run.
Let me, let me ask this question. What about, what do you think should be the goals of an electoral system? What do you think in terms of the values of the goal? Should it be fair? Should it be efficient? Should minorities have a voice in the way they're governed? I mean, what are some, what are some of the values that you would look for in the way?
Well, the elected officials need to have, serve the citizens of the city and have their best interest in mind. They need to be able to have a fair election where candidates will have a chance to run and have a chance to win, not, not have a token candidate just to be placed up there just to say, I have somebody running. I believe that when somebody is up there, an elected official, they should make sure that we have elections that will result in being fair and that the citizens will have a good choice.
Sergio, when you were talking about upper-level living in Mesquite, are you preferring to staff only or are you talking...
Well, I already know that if you're serving the city council, you need to live in the city of Mesquite. I'm talking about like the highest level of city staff, such as example, fire chief, police chief, city manager. But anybody else beyond that, maybe the emergency manager, maybe the, let's see who else. Well, I know that an argument could be made for such, like the city spokesman or the city attorney, which I don't think, their jobs, I don't think that would have, I would require them to live in the city, for example. I don't know the exact level that you would think about starting at requiring those people to be a stakeholder by living in the city. I just want to put that out there for, to be placed in the conversation.
And what is your thought about as far as city council, that are sitting, that are on the seat, that they live in Mesquite too, or...
Yes, they, if you, if you're, if you want to serve for the city of Mesquite, you should live in the city of Mesquite. If we're at large, then you live wherever in the city. If you have a single-member district, then you need to live in that district.
Thank you, Sergio. Now, Sergio, do you have a value in mind for increased pay for city council members?
No, I don't. I would think that the city would go about it by seeing what other cities that do pay their city councils of our same size and makeup pay theirs. their city councils of our same size and makeup pay theirs, live.
Hey Sergio, I share your goal in seeing a council that's a little more diverse. I'm curious to hear your analysis of what are barriers to, that we've had existing for minorities to, and women to run and win. What do you think are some institutional barriers?
I believe that citizenry should be encouraged and be made aware that they can run, that not only do their vote count, that their public service counts, and that they're not going to have to face some incumbent that's been there for a decade and a half, or they're going to face some incumbent that has been there for so many years and they have this backing of this certain section of a group of the city.
So you feel as if the incumbency is the largest barrier for minority representation?
I believe it's that they need to know that they should be able to run, that there is not an impediment, you know, like, it's like a block in their mind, I can't do it, you know, no, of course you can do it. You know, there's, there is...
I guess I'm trying to penetrate at what you think the cause of the block is, and I, and I heard you saying, I don't want to misrepresent you, so let me know if it's incorrect, saying that the, the term limits would be a, a solution for having someone who's in office for 10 years, and that's the barrier for minorities to, to run currently.
I don't think that would be the barrier itself that minorities would, would choose that, that is a...
So we could do term limits and it's still not solve the issue? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, it could do that, but if you're breaking it up, you're going to have this chance, you're not going to have the same person there, so they're not going to be there in this, in one situation of an election. So a minority could, or two hopefully, and one being a woman hopefully, could step up and run.
I was looking through my notes, and I know you spoke to us last time, I didn't, maybe I didn't write down, but I didn't hear where you were falling on single-member districts.
Single-member districts, I am good with them. If we're going to have all at large, I'm good with that too. I think both have their advantages and disadvantages. I think if, if we're talking two, we want to better ensure diversity on our council than single-member districts would help with that.
So right now, we, we have the single-member districts, but we actually have voting that's at large, right? So I have to live in the north end, but everyone in Mesquite says yea or nay. And so it's actually everyone at large, and then you, you take into account that the two at-large council members currently live pretty close to where the, the mayor lives and also where one of the councilmen lives. So you actually have a quorum within about a mile distance, two miles. And so I, I'm curious to hear, not to say that all those individuals share a, a social network that is the same, or a socioeconomic status that's the same, I don't think that's, you know, I don't know any of that data. But if, if you only do term limits, I, I'm curious to hear how you think we're going to, kind of back to Elizabeth's initial question, where do you get minorities feeling that they are now empowered to run and win?
Well, I, if you have, like you said, we have such council members in close proximity, I don't see any, really any big neighborhood in Mesquite that is pure one demograph. We are mixed throughout the city. So we may have three, for example, white men in one close proximity, but that doesn't mean there's an African-American woman or an Asian man that live in the same neighborhood.
Yeah, now we're getting somewhere, so I think that's one analysis, I, I didn't mean that condescending. But what I mean by that is, that I think is indicating a certain value that, that is in your mind about what single-member districts are about. And, and let me kind of draw a distinction. For me, single-member districts make government office more accessible by taking something that was having to talk to 140,000 neighbors, and now all of a sudden you're talking to one-sixth of it, right? And so all of a sudden, your, your size and your scope of your campaigns are cut by a sixth. And so taking that into account, it, it decentralizes power, your, your interest groups, not that Mesquite has any sort of political machine or anything like that, but it, it would, in my opinion, decentralize some of that power and make your campaigning a lot more inexpensive, and frankly, I think a lot more accountable, because you actually have to get to know your neighbors. And, and I'd be curious to hear your response to that, and then I'll, I'll shut up.
Well, I, I want to, okay, to achieve a more reflective council of what the community is, we have to, we have to break, we really first have to break the, the incumbency, a long-term incumbency. I think that it, it doesn't exactly have to be a specific ethnicity. We need more women on the council. Usually it's only been one, and it hasn't, she's been gone for a while now. If we could have just more participation, if that perceived barrier, this is part of educating voters as well, the electorate, that they can run, that there is not this barrier, that you're not going to be facing some machine, you're not going to be facing some block, that you could step up and you could have a fair chance of serving your community.
I think that's fair, and I'll just repeat that question for everybody, so if you do speak towards single-member districts, it's dangerous to give me a microphone, but I, I'd be curious to hear, in your opinion, is single-member districts really a, a euphemism for racial gerrymandering? Is, is that your connotation for single-member districts? Or is it really we're cutting the, the process by a sixth, and it still is diverse like Mesquite neighborhoods are, to your point, and, and just kind of where you view single-member districts? So I appreciate you having some comments on that.
Thank you for the, for the challenge.
And let me, let me say this, Sergio, one of the things that we was talking about last week was letting people know how to run for city council or whatever they want to run for. That's one of the concern, I think the council did address that, said there are somewhere on the website that you can actually go, and we need to gear people to that, lead people to that. And when we was talking about diversity, might not always just think about ethnicity, but young people, let me just add, man here, he's here. And the more we can draw them out like this, they'll learn more about this, this, this whole mechanism of politics, okay? So I think you're right as far as diversity, education is key.
Yes, yes, and we, we don't have to look at it one way, horizontally, we have to look horizontally and diagonally in what, who we're, we're talking to. You know, I spoke about, you know, different ethnicities, but also male, female, but then you also brought up the youth, which I did not at the moment, which I agree with very much.
Whoa.
Sergio, could you unpack the increased size of the council? Why? Could I impact?
Unpack.
Expand on it a little bit. Why, why increase size? What's the rationale?
Just, just by the face of, by the face of it, and knowing that our city has a, a pretty good size population, and the, the size of it, north-south is probably the best example, and going southeast, because we're going off into Kaufman County. I mean, we probably could use, and I'm just saying, probably two more council members, you know? Or we could distribute the districts a different way in the more populated center core of the city. Now, specifically, I don't have any specifics right now.
Thanks.
Could I ask one more?
We got one down here, and then we'll come back to you.
You know, one, one thing that, that we've discussed for quite some time, over the past 20, 30 years, is that we don't have really, at least I don't think we still do, I don't think we do now, and we didn't then, we don't have pockets of minorities in Mesquite. People come to Mesquite to be part of the community, generally speaking. So single-member districts, I don't, I don't see that's really going to, going to make a whole lot of difference. What I, well, it's not for me to give an opinion. Let me back up there a little bit. But I, you know, that, that's a part of the argument that I, I don't really understand. I think maybe we need some demographics before you rely too much on, or we do on, single-member districts. You know, on term limits, I, I can understand where you're coming from. I, I don't know if you remember or not, I think you've been around long enough, that Vernon Irwin was on the council 16 years. Carol Lefkett ran against Vernon on the argument that 16 years was too long, and he was no longer interested in what he was doing. She won, 16 years later. This is a fact. She was taken out on the same issue. You can take long-term incumbents out, when they're not doing their job. So, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, I, I just think, really think about that a lot, the next, next time you come, let, let me know what you, what you found out, done a little bit of research, and, and see if you still think that that's going to make a big difference.
Yes, sir, I'll do that. And you know, I came to Mesquite in 1990. My parents moved us, our family here when I was 18 years old. Before that, for the two years before that, we moved a couple different places, but most of my young adult, young childhood and everything, I was lived in Dallas, old East Dallas. My neighborhood is where City Place stands today. I know what pockets of ethnicity is, because I lived in a Hispanic neighborhood, Cross Haskell was black neighborhood, didn't go over there, you know?
That's Dallas.
Yeah, that's Dallas. So I know what it looks like, and I don't see that here in Mesquite.
Pretty huh?
No, I had a thought in the last minute. We'll come back.
Sergio, there are some complications with single-member districts, especially in a town like Mesquite. We're not so much segregated by parts of towns, so, but there are alternatives to encourage minority participation. You have minority values of voice. It's called proportional representation. They use it in Town of Addison, there's a forum of it, in Carrollton Farmer's Ranch, ISB. It's where all the candidates are pooled, and let's say you've got three vacancies on your council, and you've got 10 candidates, all the voters' votes are pooled, and the top three vote winners get the, get the positions.
Yes, I get that one, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's, and it does encourage minority voices, because you don't have to have majority winner-take-all for every single position, which kind of leads to the same voters electing the entire board or the entire council with a, a situation like we have in Mesquite. And I was just wondering, how do you react to something like that? I mean, it sounds kind of radical, it's...
That, that doesn't sound too radical to me, because I've, I've heard that before, and I, I, I understand the concept. It, it really makes the contest look like a contest, and, and it's like you, the candidate can gather their supporters and say, look, we don't have to win outright, we have to make a very good showing. You know, we don't have to come in first, we don't have to come in second. If we do third, we're in. We have to motivate their voters for the candidate to come in, and that, that'll be the candidate's issue, but I understand that totally.
So that sounds good to me.
That is acceptable.
Anything else for Mr. Garcia? Thank you very much. Christina Hall.
Christina Hall, 1609 Windmeyer Drive, here in Mesquite. I've lived here in Mesquite since 1996. I was not able to attend unfortunately the last meeting, I had a conflict, but seems like my ideas are very similar to what you heard at the last meeting and what you've already heard this evening. So to kind of piggyback off of what everybody has said, my little notes are, sound like a repeat, but I am definitely for term limits. I would suggest two-year terms with a maximum of four consecutive terms, and then one term off, and before you can come back. So it'd be a maximum of eight years on, two years off, before you can come back on, on the council again. I think that having term limits, well, having, having elected leaders that serve for more than a decade, sometimes you don't have the energy and the new ideas and the innovation that, that is needed to keep the city moving forward. I think it's very good to get fresh ideas on a regular basis. I think term limits help avoid complacency and allows for the good people to come back if they still want to come back. So I think that it's a, very positive, so I'm not going to beat that dead horse. Everybody else has pretty much said the same thing this evening. Something else that I do want to bring up though, was, I believe another issue was moving the elections from May to November. And that's something that I would definitely encourage. I feel that the elections are not very well attended in May, and I could speak on that personally. I think moving the elections to November will encourage more participation, people are coming out to vote on different things, it'll increase the numbers that we see in this city that are pretty much deplorable when it comes to, to local elections. So I definitely would like to see that as a consideration. I think that moving the, the voting to November would help that quite a bit. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'll entertain questions from everybody except Ron Ward.
So that's a first. Okay, okay.
Got one.
Okay, these are just comments I've gotten through the week, where they talk about moving the elections from May to November. Are you concerned about the people that come over there, that have come there for another reason to vote, and they say, okay, I'll just vote this, this, this? They're really not educated voters?
I think it'll encourage them to become more educated, when they know that, that different things are, that are going to be on the ballot, and they know that there's going to be local, local elections on the ballot, and I think that would encourage them to do a little bit more research, research that they would not be willing to do if they were coming out just for those elections.
No, I'm saying when they're there, they find out, oh, you have the local elections, are you concerned they're just going to vote?
Well, I would hope that they're doing their research on those November elections, so in the process of doing it, they would do research on all of the candidates that are on the ballot. I think you'd get more research done there and a better educated voter than you do in May, personally.
Do you think it would be an advantage to a voter to know that November is the month I vote, and I need to do my homework before I go to the ballot in November? There's always November, one month out of the year, instead of five under the year.
Absolutely, because sometimes we have May elections and sometimes we don't. Sometimes they're, you know, uncontested positions and we don't have an election at all. So I think that would help to keep it in people's mind, the consistency.
Hey Christina, I was curious, kind of back from the conversation we were just having, I don't want to phrase this, when you were with the school board, did you guys just hope that the school bond would pass based on who showed up, or did you do some sort of voter education to ensure that it would pass?
We did quite extensive voter education, and I was actually, all the board members were a part of that. We had several town hall meetings, we went to different schools and did similar meetings like this one. We spoke at, I know I personally spoke at the Mesquite Ministerial Alliance, different organizations, different groups. We had literature in English and in Spanish that we disseminated to the community, we had it on the website in English and Spanish. We had cards at every meeting, we, we showed up at some crime watch meetings, and we discussed it at crime watch meetings. We always had cards available in both English and Spanish for anybody who had questions about the bond, and those questions were answered on the website so that they can go. Those questions, really time didn't permit us to answer questions that evening, so we would collect the questions and put them on the website, and so that the whole community could benefit from those questions. So we did a lot of work.
Yeah, that's really expansive. And so you, you had something that was kind of a micro-policy, and what I mean by that is a specialized policy issue that wasn't every May election. It, it came, you know, once every five years, 10 years, and you guys went out and you educated your electorate to, to get the victory that you would hope would happen. And I would expect if May to November elections were to happen, you'd have candidates who'd have to do the same mechanism, right? Go out and educate, make sure folks know. And, and I just, I guess I'm, I'm really struggling with any sort of notion that somehow voters are just, I don't want to say ignorant, because it's, it's an offensive word, but really I think there's a lot of connotations that somehow November voters aren't going to do their due diligence to decide, you know, who would be coming to participate. And the other question I had for you is, is a little, I guess, personal, but if you're willing, I'd be curious to hear your perspective as someone who has been a minority candidate in a municipal election, if you could share the experience of what you think barriers have existed, even on the city council side.
Sure. Sure. I think the, my situation was a little bit unique because I was appointed to the school board. So, I did not run for the position. I was the first African-American to serve on the school board, and I don't think that would have happened had I had to run for an election. I think that because I was appointed and placed in that position, it enabled me to not only help open up the eyes of the community and educate. I felt like it was my responsibility to educate not only everybody in the community, but especially the minority community. I was a little bit intimidated when I first got the position. And I think a lot of the reasons why we don't see diversity on elected official positions is because it is intimidating. You think that you're not prepared for it. You think that you don't know everything that you need to know. And for me, it was a big responsibility. Being the first African-American, I felt like there were a lot of eyes on me, so I wanted to make triple sure that I knew exactly what I was doing. I worked very hard to read all the material I could, go to all the classes that I could because I felt like there was a spotlight on me. And I think that might discourage some people from running because they feel like maybe it's too much information, or they're not prepared, or they're not worthy of the position. So, that was my job to get out there and say, "Look, there's a learning curve in anything that you do, and once you get into the position, you know, you can learn, you can make a difference, you can be a contributing factor." I think that, going back to diversity, especially on city council and school board, is that when you don't have term limits and you have people that have been in a position for several years, again, it's very intimidating when somebody has been serving, you know, in the case of the school board, 25, 28 years, you know, you have the same person. It's very intimidating as anybody, but especially a minority who has been underrepresented in that position in the past, to say, "I'm going to take on this 25-year incumbent." A few things happen. Number one, it's intimidating. Number two, that 25-year incumbent has such a network of people behind them in Mesquite. And I want to pick my words carefully. I don't want to say that they would intimidate people, but their influence and their circle of friends would make it a little bit challenging for that person to be successful, simply because they're trying to support their candidate, their person that's been in that office for several years. You might have somebody who's moved into Mesquite in the last 10, 15 years and doesn't have that same network of people, doesn't have the financial backing that that incumbent may have. And again, that makes it almost impossible in their minds to be able to have an opportunity to be on an even playing field. And that's where I think term limits really come into place in terms of leveling the playing field, even if it's in your mind of thinking that you have a chance. And that's something that we really need to work on, is just letting people know in their mind that they are worthy of the position and they do have a chance, because I feel like they're discouraged, and they've seen things that have happened with other candidates, especially social media does not help. And so, they don't want to be, put themselves or their family in that type of position to be, I mean, I know bullied is a strong word, but to be intimidated.
Well, and I appreciate you sharing that perspective, and I appreciate you breaking that barrier. The part, I guess, I'm struggling with, I think we all want our friends, our social network, if there's someone we know to run for office, to win, right? We want to support the person we know, and say, "We have a friend on council or on the school board." What stops, even if you have term limits, what stops that network, that friendship, that, you know, if it's a faith community, if it's a civic organization, whatever it is, from, instead of having John Smith, it's now, you know, Ted Smith from that same social network that is now going to be tapped on the shoulder, even with term limits? So, I guess, if you were not appointed to the school board, and I don't want to play hypothetical, but if we had term limits and there weren't incumbents, do you think those power centers dissolve just because you don't have incumbents that are running and winning each time?
I'm not sure I understand the question, but the power centers that you're referring to are those that are supporting the incumbents?
Right. And so, even if you have term limits, why do they not just go tap the next guy on the shoulder from the same demographics, from the same socioeconomic, from the same faith?
Sure, they can, but I think that somebody who's wanting to break into that position would feel less intimidated, even if it was a different candidate from that same group, because they would feel that it's a new candidate, it's a new person. And I think that's a big difference, having a new person as opposed to an incumbent.
You know, I don't think we have a large dataset, but when we've had open seats in Mesquite, I'm not sure that's happened. We have not yet had a Christina Hall on the city council who has run and gotten elected. And so, when you've had that scenario where it is an open seat, you don't have the long-term incumbent, no one has all of a sudden felt, I'm not trying to be disingenuous, but like, all of a sudden, suddenly empowered that there's an opening, this is my one shot, you know, I'm going to strike now. And so, I'm kind of having some difficulty making that click in my mind, and so, you know, I'll quit talking, but I'd be curious to hear your perspective on open seats and why we haven't necessarily seen that, because that's what term limits would produce, right? More open seats with no incumbents.
Yeah, and I think that goes back to, you have to start out at a lower level. And I encourage people in my community to volunteer more at the city level. I think you can't just wake up one day and decide, "I'm going to run for an open city council seat." You have to serve on committees, you have to serve on boards, you have to be involved in your community and work your way up to the ranks. Not to say somebody can't just one day decide they want to come, become, you know, a city council member, but I think you have to put in the work and put in the effort and educate yourself and show the, show yourself, your family, and your community that you really are committed. So, that is my goal. What I try to do is encourage women and African-Americans and Hispanics to serve on different boards. When I hear about, you know, the different committees and different things in the community that are going on, I encourage them to start at that level for a few reasons. Number one, it's not as intimidating. Number two, you're gaining the knowledge and the confidence that you need so that when these positions do become available, you feel like you can, you know, that you can serve.
I have a question, Ms. Arnold. Are you still on the board?
No, sir.
And with the work that you put in, in the name recognition, would you feel comfortable running for that position now?
Well, that's a fact. Okay. Ms. Hall, does it seem to you, what do you think about, like, the November elections? I mean, I'm thinking that if you get more people there, that's your shot at diversity.
Yeah, I definitely would encourage November elections. I'm for moving the local elections from May to November, just for that reason. I think not only will you get an increase in numbers, but I feel like you'll get more educated voters, because I think people will take the time to educate themselves, not only on the local candidates that are running, but the state and national as well.
Thanks. Thank you.
I have a question for you, and I'm real curious, knowing how hard you campaigned the last time and how hard you fought to keep your seat on the school board. I'm curious about the two years off, because in your election, you were facing a former incumbent who had come back after being off for a while and ran again. Yeah, okay.
No, she'd never been on the school.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I had the place confused, so, my apologies. So, the question doesn't even apply. Any other questions?
I have one more, one more. So, I'm just, I'm coming in at the end. So, you ran again.
I did.
Okay, and you lost to someone that hadn't ran before?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Just trying to clarify.
Anything else for Ms. Hall? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else fill out a card? Yes, no, I'm just saying, we have two cards left, and then here's another one.
I'll see two questions.
Okay. So, Barbara Rojas?
Barbara Rojas, 2423 Lagoon Drive in Mesquite, not too far from here. I just have a kind of a personal comment to make about single-member districts. I think that I am for that because I feel like that having my councilman that's over my district gives me a little bit more power to try and get things done in my area when I want them done. And I know that before the council that we had, I've been here for 54 years, and the councils that we have had have not done very well as far as getting out to the people. And then, we got one council member that came in, and he wanted to take care of everybody, and everybody wanted to go to him, and we kind of drug him down, I think, through the trenches because everybody knew that he would get something done, and that's not being fair to him. So, I think that we need single-member districts, and I think that people in my area, and it could be that, just from my perspective and kind of my little neighborhood that I live in, we, I have more Hispanics that live there than anybody probably in the city of Mesquite. And to me, that would maybe give them an advantage of getting a minority person in there on the city council. And whoever suggested that we had an avenue for people to go through to, if they wanted to run, then we need to get that out more, because I don't think people know that. And there's people that we have on our boards, and I know some that my husband has been talking to about running. And I don't think he knows about the avenue for them to go through to see if that's an avenue that they want to pursue. But, that's my opinion. No questions. Thank you.
You win. Ms. Arnold? Yes, that would be great.
Millie Arnold, 2206 Luau, Mesquite. I've lived here since 1958. You've heard me say that many times. I basically have just two questions, and I appreciate Barbara's comment about the avenue for people running for city council, because I think that we need to educate our community about how to run for a city council position. And one of the big things that, my personal opinion, is one of the big things that reduces an interest in running for city council, it's called money. Our government, you know, as we well know, every time you vote for somebody, they've got a lot of financial backing, and not every, this gentleman or, you know, just the average Joe would have all that financial backing to run for a city election. So, I really appreciate the comments about increasing the education for running for city council. And then, the other question I have is, how do you motivate people to vote? And I think one of the ways is well-taken that Ms. Hall had to say is, people, you know, we're all creatures of habit, you know? We all know when it's time for our income tax to go in and be filed, and then there's still people throwing things out the window and, you know, before April deadline. And I really think that if we can motivate people that, yeah, we're creatures of habit, November is the election month, November is the election month. If we just know that that's the month to vote, but then we're going to motivate people, I think, because I think, I'm personally embarrassed about how our voter turnout happens every year on the city level. I think it's a crime. And I give my grandchildren voter registration cards all the time, and I still don't know if they filled them out. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Would you favor either by ordinance or by a charter amendment, some sort of campaign finance regulations?
I think a charter amendment would be lovely, personally, in my opinion, because, again, that would kind of weed out some of the, excuse the term, good old boy cliques, and maybe open some doors for some people that are truly interested, but they just don't know how. You know, we don't know what we don't know.
That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Miklus, the Honorable Robert Miklus.
Thank you. The reason I filled out a card tonight, first of all, I wanted to welcome everyone to the district that I represent, here in District One. And, you know, I've been to the first one last week, and regardless of whether you agree or disagree with individual points, isn't this terrific?
Yes.
This is as close to pure democracy as it gets. And regardless of anything else, if I could write in a charter amendment that says that we will regularly go to our people and ask them, "How are things going? How is the government being shaped? Are there things or adjustments or things that we need to do?" And get out amongst the people, then we've done a terrific thing. And I just love this, I love every moment of it. I want to thank all of y'all for serving, especially Ms. Shepherd. Thank you for, you're doing me a favor by being, I know you like it, and I, you know, but you're, thank you very much for being here. And by the way, when we're talking about diversity, don't we see a lot of diversity up there tonight, a lot of future leaders of the city? Isn't that tremendous? So, when we talk about encouraging diversity, this is part of it right here tonight. So, I wanted to appreciate, I want to tell y'all, I appreciate all of y'all, and thank y'all very much. Now, I'm not going to go through my opinions. I think a lot of y'all already know my opinions on a lot of stuff, I'm not shy. But, since I'm up here at the microphone, I thought it would be remiss if I didn't give y'all an opportunity to ask me questions, because you might want to parse or pare down items. And that's all I'm saying. And if y'all don't want to, I'm good with that, too. I got to make sure my kid's done his homework tonight, so you're doing me a favor either way, but I just, I'm never shy about answering a question, so if y'all feel like y'all want to ask me any individual questions about, say, proportional representation, or sitting off the council and sitting back on, or the number of terms or anything, I'm okay with that, but if y'all don't want to, that's up to y'all, too. I don't want to be accused of cooking the books, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Does proportional representation sound good to you?
I will tell you my experience, and I do a lot of development work in some of the smaller towns around DFW. And what proportional representation is, is it says, "Vote for the top three." And so, you get three votes, you may have seven people running, and the top three who get it, get it. Now, you can't vote for one person three times, you have to vote for three separate people. So, here's an incredible thing, you know, you can actually have a tie vote and a runoff on those things. It's very rare and very, but you can. But anyway, regardless of that, what I've found with proportional representation ballots is that you get slate voting. Your community says, "Vote for these three guys," or women, or whatever block, you know, the anti-growth block, or the pro-growth block, or the business community block, and that with proportional representation, you have pulling of resources, block voting, and you get those three in. It is my experience that proportional representation rarely results in a diverse result for the balloting. That's just my experience. I'm not saying I think it's a great idea, I think it's not a good idea. I'm just telling you, in my experience, proportional voting doesn't result in a unsettlemented result.
And what about cumulative, like Carrollton Farmers Branch?
That's what I mean by that. It's the same, it's the same sort of thing where if you vote for three and you get that, you typically, Carrollton Farmers Branch gets slate voting, and a lot of other smaller communities that do that, cumulative voting gets block voting. That's been my experience. Whether that's good or bad, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying to comment for it.
I thought you could catch all of your votes from a single candidate, and he chose...
I've never seen that. If that's true, then that would be unique for me, and I can't comment on that because I haven't had that experience. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions I want to ask you. I had heard at one point, one of the council mentioned that if you're doing a great job, then why do we need to have term limits? What is your thought on that? Do you feel that we should have the term limits, or like what this councilman had commented?
Well, I appreciate it, and I don't know which councilman or woman said that, so I'm not going to, I've always supported term limits. I've supported term limits in my other political life, and I'll tell you for a slightly different reason. And I don't disagree with the idea or the concept that what you do is you... disagree with the idea or the concept that what you do is you desediment, or you break up people who have been there for a very long time. But I think someone commented about John Wiley Price or Eddie Bernice Johnson. I think the issue is not that you have the same electorate base who's gonna make the same decision on the ballot over and over again. I mean, that's absolutely true. Your commissioner's district, you're gonna have the same people voting in a congressional district. I think the issue that I like term limits, and feel that they're necessary, is that, that after a certain period of time, your elected official moves away from the values of that electorate, and yet that elected official has so much money, resources and connections to the community that they become unstoppable, relatively speaking, with some exceptions. And I realize that that's me talking, so I can admit to an exception myself. But the fact of the matter is, the vast majority of people who serve in office after a certain period of time, and it's just human nature, not everyone, not all the time, but as a generalization, they become disconnected to the districts that they serve. They become disconnected to the elements they serve. And yes, Carol Locke had lost after 16 years, and had defeated someone who had served for 16 years. But doesn't it say something that you had only two council members over a 32-year period of time? And it's also proof positive that 16 years is too long, and that, you know, we were in a position where a realtor with a lot of resources was the only one who could knock off the previous guy, and et cetera, et cetera. What you do when you don't call people home, so to speak, is you make it nearly impossible to defeat an entrenched incumbent who has resources, public support and money, even though they strayed far, far away from the values that originally got them elected. And, you know, we allow a president to serve eight years, and the republic hasn't crashed and burned just yet. And I think if we can limit our president to eight years, we could limit a city council member to eight years as well, or a woman as well. And the fascinating thing is, we've got Balt Springs and Garland and Dallas, and they have far more people per position running for those offices than we do in Mesquite. They have term limits and we don't. And statistics just show, math is never wrong. Where you have term limits, you have more engagement, more people running, more people running for office. And I think desedimentation, reconnection with the values of your community, and getting more people involved is exactly why we should have term limits. I think that's a direct answer to that question, right?
Yes.
Thanks, Janice.
And the next question is, if, you know, everybody votes for the term limits...
Let me interrupt for a second. Mr. Miklos, your time is up.
I thought that was an ICDM line.
So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna allow this question to be finished, and I'll allow you to answer the question, but I'm only gonna give you a minute and a half to answer the question.
But I'm a lawyer.
And that's why I'm only giving you a minute and a half, 'cause I is one, too, and I know how that works. So I just ask you to be respectful of that time and the time limits, and then we'll wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me distract a bit for a minute. As far as if they approve it, well, since you're only gonna get one question, I'm gonna ask you the other one.
I'll spit it out quick.
Okay. What is your thoughts about the council and mayor living in Mesquite and not outside?
The council mayor, oh, they have to already, and that's required by state law, too.
Okay, okay.
That was less than a minute, yeah.
Then I'll just stick with that one.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll ask you next time.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight, and I appreciate it. And if you have questions, committee members or citizens, if you have questions for Mr. Miklos or any of the council members, all of our contact information is at cityofmesquite.com. I think that all of us have our mobile numbers on there, and also have our email addresses on there as well. So please feel free to comment. And I think now our esteemed mayor, I don't have a card for the day, so he's obviously out of order.
I was gonna ask you guys, would y'all like an opportunity, and especially the ones that are here, to hear from our entire council on this? Because I would love for us, as a body, to be able to weigh in to you, because, no disrespect, but to have one council member stand up here and talk about his opinion doesn't give you the same impact of having all of us have an opportunity to share our opinions. So I wanna throw that out tonight, give you that opportunity to think about it. Maybe we could have a meeting, we could do it publicly or whatever. But like I said, I understand it's his district, and I'm not trying to get involved, and maybe each district guy will do that, but you've got also three that aren't district people. So I don't wanna do that tonight, I'm not asking for that. But I wanted something for you to think about, and if you'd like to hear from your current elected officials, you can. My other thing, I'm gonna take two more minutes and tell you something that I've heard the last two meetings. We give you my own experience in Mesquite, Texas, and I've got many people in this room that I know dislike me. That's politics. I've tried to make decisions as best that I can for this city, this city, north, south, east and west, and not everybody agrees, and I understand that. But one thing I did wanna share with you was, we talk about engagement, and how do we get people to run? Regardless, black, white, Hispanic, it doesn't matter. How do you get people to run? Tell you what I've done. You have to have a heart for service, and I know everyone here tonight has a heart for service. I decided that I was gonna serve, just like you guys have served. And I got on boards, and I served for about eight or 10 years on boards and commissions. I'm fortunate to have a local business. Fortunate, because I have people coming through my business, 'cause it's retail, every day. Engagement, I talk to you guys every day in this community. You'd be shocked how many people come through asking me things. I'm engaged. How do you get more people to run? You serve. You serve, you talk about the faith community. We have a large faith community in town. We have lots of boards and commissions to be involved with. And yes, sometimes people wake up and decide they wanna run for office one morning, and that's great. I think they should. It's not always about the money. It seems to be about the money, because everybody says, "I got outspent," or "That person outspent me," or whatever. But I will remind you, and y'all have heard this, that six out of seven positions have been changed in the last three years. And I'm not here tonight to talk about all the things, I don't wanna talk about questions, and I don't wanna get into all that. If you'd like to hear from all of us, I think there's a time and place that's appropriate. But I ran, and I won. And then I turned myself out. I turned myself out. I did come back, I ran against a long-term, well-funded incumbent, and also won. So I'm just giving you some examples, that it happens, it happens in Mesquite, and it happens all over our country. So I wanted to tell you, if you want to, if you'd like for us to, or if the council desires to do something like that, I'd love to have the opportunity. If not, call us, and we'll talk to you like Mr. Nocci said. Thank you.
So as a committee, anyone else have any comments for tonight? Sorry.
I'll come.
Yes, sir.
I'll make this brief. Brian Odom, 1330 Buena Vista. I personally believe that the city council are citizens of this city, and they have every right to fill out a card and talk. Thank you.
Deborah Morgan, 223 East Kimbrough, Mesquite. I just wanna follow up to what Mayor Pickett said. I think an additional meeting where the council members speak to their own opinions, et cetera, would be advantageous after these district meetings. That's it.
I'm sure the council as a whole will consider that at a properly posted meeting where we could take action on that. So the committee itself, we have one item of business that we need to address, and there has been some requests for us to meet on a night other than Wednesday. And I wanna bring it to the committee to see if you wanna do that. We have a attendance requirement on us, and so Jeff and I, as the chairs of the committee, didn't feel like it would be fair for anyone other than the committee to decide on having that meeting. So let us know, or I guess we can talk about it right here, in terms of when you would wanna do that meeting. I think that the August, October, the 30th is a night that we would have the council chambers available for a meeting of this committee. And so I know Jeff's probably gonna be starting to get his Halloween makeup on that night, but...
Different set of makeup, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just add, guys, that we do have a council requirement from the charges that everyone on here serves 90% of the meetings, or you're automatically booted. And so you've already been front-loaded with these times and dates, and you've agreed to make it every time, because we may have less than 10 meetings. And so I'm not a magician, mathologist, mathematician, I think is the right word. Yeah. But if you're not able to make any of the meetings, you're gonna be booted off. And so I didn't want outside influence, council members, whoever, to all of a sudden suggest something. I want it to come from this body, and everyone in this committee agree that, you know, an additional day, and we don't have to put it on the calendar right now. But I think as we operate as a body, it's important that this body is the deciding factor. And I think we also need to have a conversation about what rules we want for our committee, of whether everyone who speaks is filling out a comment card, how much time we're allocating to them. I think Greg has done a great job sharing this. But, you know, I think as a council, you guys should have input, or a committee, you guys should have input on, do we wanna do a timer at all? Do we want everyone to finish? Because we're kind of interrupting them as they are making their statements and having questions and cutting folks off. And so I just wanna empower you to make motions, have your committee, because you're an equal vote at this table.
I like having the time...
Sorry.
I appreciate having the time completely flexible, because we learn so much in the dialogue that we have with people and among each other. I think that's very valuable. I appreciate that, and would hope that we can keep doing that. It's a burden, I know that, because the meetings run very long, but it's big issues that we're talking about here, and I'd like to know what people think. On having an additional meeting, I don't know that anybody would have a problem with that. I'm just curious as to what the purpose would be? Is it to solicit input from citizens who can't make the Wednesday meetings? Is that the purpose?
That's correct.
Sounds good to me.
So is there anyone that would be unavailable or is opposed to an additional meeting? And now you know what it's like to be on the council, to be called out in front of everybody on a boat.
That's right, that's right.
So we'll go ahead and work with the city manager's office to get that scheduled, and so we can go ahead and plan on a meeting on October the 30th at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. And Jeff and I'll buy cookies. Any other business from the committee members? Any discussions?
You know, there's...
Oh, here we go.
There's one thing that worries me a little bit about single-member districts. I don't wanna see us get into a situation where the different districts are fighting each other over funding, and splitting a city into six parts, or four parts, or whatever. And that's my big concern about single-member districts. I understand the reason that a lot of people want term limits, you know, I mean, we do have the opportunity to do that every year, but we don't. So I can understand why people would want that. But I'd really like some opinions, maybe at the next meeting, on how, does anybody else see there being conflict, I mean, to the point of having a disruptive council unable to move forward? That's my big concern about that.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Hearing none. We will stand adjourned until next week, and next week's meeting is on October, or, sorry, September the 20th. And we are meeting at Agnew. Agnew, A-G-N-E-W, not A-C-N-E-W.
Kimbrough will eventually be right, though.
Yeah, Kimbrough.
If you just keep going to Kimbrough.
Kimbrough will eventually be right, right, so... Tell your friends and neighbors, okay? If you're driving by Kimbrough and you see Gary Ward next week, tell him he needs to be at Agnew. Thank y'all for coming tonight.